At this time, I'd like to call to order the January 11th, 2016 meeting of Latrobe City Council. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the allegiance and flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I ask that we take a moment of silence to ask for guidance, to give thanks, or to just quietly relax. Thank you. Roquan Miss Buck?
Mr. Bertels?
Here.
Mr. Murka?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell-Cradenner? Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Walker?
Here.
Six present.
At this time, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th, 2015 meeting?
I move the minutes of the December 14th, 2015 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I second that motion.
Any question or discussion about the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the months of December 2015?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Murka, may I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forish. Any questions or discussions on the department reports and bills? You're in the chair. Don't ask a question.
Are there anything out of the budget? Oh.
It's a new budget year, so we haven't spent any money yet.
No, there is not.
Now, I have a question, though. There's a lot that's, like, over. It shows it's over, but how can that be if there's nothing out of the budget?
Yeah, we look at it in total. Some items are high, some items are low. We look at it basically as a budget for the entire city. You're right. I mean, some items will be high. It's very hard to budget in advance exactly how much you're going to spend on ammunition, but you've got to spend it. So something else, as long as each department stays within the budget, you know, we're fine. Now, some of the departments, like road crew, salt, and stuff like that, if it goes over, it's just because it has to go over. You know, we have no choice. But we look, I look at it in total.
In other words, we may buy more salt than we thought we were going to need, but salt was in our budget. So if we have to buy more salt because we get more snow, we're really not buying something that's outside the budget. We may be spending more money on salt than we budgeted for, but then somewhere else we're spending less so we can stay within the budget.
Yeah, we try to, you try to guess your best guess, but remember, a budget's nothing more than a good guess.
So we're just robbing Peter to pay more?
Yeah, we're using one item to pay for another item. How's that?
We're mixing analogies and metaphors all the time and stuff here, so... Any other questions? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have our citizens' request portion of the agenda. That is, to discuss items that are on the agenda. At the end of the meeting, we'll have time to talk about anything else that's on your mind, but if you have something to discuss related to the items on the agenda, please go to the microphone, state your name and address, and please try to keep your comments to three to five minutes.
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I think it would probably be a good idea at the, at our meetings here, council meetings, that, you know, we talk about something's over budget, something's under budget. I think that it would be a good idea for the city manager, if there's overage or unders budget, that they say what those items are and the reason why they're over or below budget. Also, in the, ending December 31st, I would assume that the $400,000 that we received from the Athlevy Field sale, I would assume that that was probably considered in the reserves for the end of the year, and what are the reserves as of December 31st?
We have not received any money yet.
Oh.
Okay, so we're clear. There has not been an actual transaction yet. I don't know what the reserves are. I think it's about...
About 1.2. I'm sorry. About 1.2 million. They're actually up about, we probably projected about 200,000 to 250,000. It's a little higher than that.
It's like any other sale. There has to be a period of time, and there's a closing and all that kind of stuff, so...
What about the suggestion that we give a little resume of what the over and under budget for different departments are? Geez, that's very difficult.
I think it is because, I mean, that's, I think to get into that level of detail, I mean, I'm sure if you wanted to see that, you know, we would be happy to show it to you one-on-one, but to take up everybody's time to say that we spent, you know, $50 more on tablets than we budgeted, I mean, it's, you know, if there's something really big that, you know, or unusual, like a new HVAC system or some big expenditure, I think we would talk about that, but...
Yeah, we would discuss anything unusual in advance.
You know, we budgeted so much for postage, and maybe we go over for postage, and, you know, those kinds of things. I mean, I don't know where you draw the line. So I wouldn't opt to do that unless there was something unusual in the high-line item. Anyone else? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, moving on. Under committee reports, I'm going to just skip over committee reports because we have a new council, and we're going to establish new committees. We've discussed what new committees we want. We're going to discuss it in more detail at the January Agenda Prep meeting, and then appoint new committees in February. So, you know, three of the people that are on here aren't here, and unless anyone else that's here has anything on these committees that they want to talk about, I'm just going to move past that until we set up the new committees. Any board and authority reports? I don't believe there are any from here from any of the boards. Department reports. Joe?
No report.
No report?
Thank you.
Chief Boomer?
No report.
Chief Brazili?
No report.
Well, you guys are making it easy. Happy New Year! And Ann isn't feeling well, so she's not here today. Is there any way that you know from the code?
Uh, no, nothing that, uh, no, nothing that I can speak about right now.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kelly, you're up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item appears under the Administration Finance Department. It is our annual tax ordinance. It reads fixing the tax rate for general city purposes and other purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016. Section 1, or now therefore be resolved, section 1, that a tax being the same as hereby levied on all real property within the city of Latrobe subject to taxation for the fiscal year 2016, beginning January 1, 2016, ending December 31, 2016, is follows: For general city purposes, a tax rate in the sum of 21.30 mils on each dollar of assessed value at 100% market value of assessed valuation B. For Adams Memorial Library, a tax rate in the sum of .20 mils on each dollar of assessed value in accordance with the vote of the electorate of Latrobe Borough at the special election of November 1953. For other purposes, for general government protection of persons and property, health and sanitation, highways, special services, and other miscellaneous services. Section 2, that the total tax rate hereby levied for all city purposes is hereby fixed at 21.50 mils. Section 3, that any ordinances or parts thereof inconsistent with this ordinance be in the same or hereby repealed. Section 4, that the within ordinance shall take effect on the date of publication of opposing act, but notice of passage of the same. The proper motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor, and I might add that there is no increase in taxation for this year.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinances outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Forish, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Boldmarry. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2016-1. Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
The next item appearing under the Administration of Finance Department is also an ordinance. Because of its length, I will simply highlight it. It is entitled, Establishing Wages Ours and Fringe Benefits of Positions of the City of Latrobe for fiscal year 2016, and attached to the ordinance is Exhibit A, that will outline the various salaries and/or fringe benefits of the city manager, of the director of Administration of Finance, the director of the police department, the director of the public works department, the code zoning officer, the director of the fire department, and the two paid-duty drivers. The motion would be to adopt the ordinances outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinances outlined by the solicitor?
A motion to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Bertels, may I have a second, please?
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Buck? This is ordinance 2016-2. Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Again, under the Administration of Finance Department is the third ordinance. It is also lengthy. I will do it by title. It's an ordinance of the City of Latrobe, a home world charter municipality, relative to the establishment and maintenance of employees' pension, annuity insurance, and benefit funds, or fund or funds, to amend certain provisions of the pension plan or program applicable to the police employees of said city, and the amendment creates a deferred retirement option plan for those employed in the City of Latrobe Police Department. The proper motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to enact the ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ms. Beazey. May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? For the new council members, do you need an explanation of what this is?
No.
You guys are good with it?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Harvey?
I'm good with it.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody understood what it was all about. Any, no questions or discussion?
Buck? This is ordinance 2016-3. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
The next item also appears under the Administration of Finance Department. It is a resolution. It's entitled, Establishing a Reserve Account for a Portion of the Proceeds from the Sale of the Fifth Ward Playground for the Relocation of the Deck Hockey Structure and Other Playground Equipment and Sports Equipment, now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that the Council of City of Latrobe hereby approves transferring the sum of $200,000 to a reserve account for the Latrobe Park and Recreation Commission to reestablish the structure, that being the deck hockey structure, equipment, that being the basketball hoops, the backstop for the softball field, and the various playground equipment at new location or locations in the City of Latrobe. Section 2, that the Park and Recreation Commission will be required to submit invoices for the transfer of the existing structure and equipment and/or purchase of a new structure or equipment to cause said sum to be paid to the commission. Section 3, if the amount of the funds needed to reestablish the deck hockey structure or the equipment at a new location is less than $200,000, then in that event, the amount to be paid by the city to the Park and Recreation Commission shall be the actual amount expended. It is the intent of this resolution that the $200,000 is a maximum cap, but that the full amount need not be expended if not needed to reestablish the deck hockey structure and/or equipment at a different location within the city. Section 5, that the $200,000 or any portion thereof required to reestablish the deck hockey structure and/or equipment at different locations must be expended on or before January 21, 2018. If said funds are not expended by that time, this agreement shall terminate. There be no void, and the city shall be free to transfer any funds remaining in the reserve account to the city capital account. And section 6 authorizes the mayor, city manager, and city secretary to take any and all action and sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The proper motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, just so we can let everybody know, the property actually appraised at what, 177, something like that?
That's correct.
And basically, they were putting in the deck hockey and the rest of the equipment to get the $400,000.
Well, that's what the city asked for, yes, and the city districts bid was, their appraisal was different, was higher than ours, so, yes.
And this goes without saying that none of this will be spent until we actually get the $400,000.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-5. Mr. Forish?
No.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Since I serve on the Park and Rec Commission, I'm going to abstain.
So the vote is four yes, one no, one abstain.
The last item under the Administration of Finance Department is also a resolution. It reads, Appointing of City Auditor. Section 1, that de Blasio and de Blasio Associates being are hereby appointed as auditor for the financial records of the City of Latrobe for a period of three years to expire January 31, 2019. Section 2, that the within resolution shall become effective immediately. The proper motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Forish, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? This is just, sorry, was I not going... My name tag, sorry. This is just a motion, correct?
Uh, no.
Oh, so, Resolution 2...
Resolution 2.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-6. Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
The next department under which we have a matter to attend to is the police department, and it is our annual catch-up ordinance, if you will, with regard to Chapter 256. The title of the ordinance, I'm sorry, the title of the ordinance is amending Chapter 256, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 256-17, Establishment and/or Removal of Handicap Parking Spaces. The only two activities that we had for Chapter 256 by resolution was the establishment of two handicapped spaces. The first one was adjacent to the property of Theodore Kowalski. The second was adjacent to the property of Patricia E. Gillis. We are now making these permanent by ordinance. The motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please, to enact the ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Murka, may I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Forish. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah. I don't think either of these people may be living.
I'm not 100% sure, but I know what the...
Julie said, um, Theodore Kowalski just died.
Yeah, we were going to check. We just mentioned that. What happens to that, that will nullify this. We're showing it to record, and then if they are, if they have passed, that would end up removing it. The handicapped parking from that spot.
Because it's already there.
We agree on one.
Oh, okay. The handicap parking is always there because we did it before.
Yeah, we're ratifying it by ordinance, but it can also be terminated if the person who needed it is no longer alive.
I mean, it's just...
We're not going to...
Yeah. Don't put that discussion in... Any other questions?
Ms. Buck? This is ordinance 2016-4. Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
That concludes Mr. Kelly's portion of the agenda. Now we move on to unfinished business, and we have some appointments, and you have some resolutions...
I do have.
...associated with those appointments. The first one I have is Latrobe Municipal Authority, and I appoint Carl Bolinger, Skip Bolinger, to that position. Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, the resolution would read, appointing member to Latrobe Municipal Authority, now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that Carl "Skip" Bolinger being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2021. Resolve and counsel this state, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-7. Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
For the zoning hearing board, I appoint Mr. Rick Fritz. He is currently on the board. His term, no. Is he new? Yeah.
He's incumbent.
He's the incumbent.
The resolution would read, appointing member to the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board, now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that Rick Fritz being and is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2021. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as read.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as read?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-8. Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Well, Medina.
No, IDA.
Well, yeah, IDA.
That's incumbent.
Okay, Mrs. Manoli is the incumbent, and she's reapplying. We still have vacancy there, right?
Well...
One vacancy expires, one...
Charles Dominic is still serving.
Okay.
Yeah. And Stuart Alvar resigned, so that will create another...
Okay, well, let's, let's, I'll appoint Mrs. Manoli, and then we'll talk about the other things. So, Mr. Kelly?
The resolution would read, appointing member to the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority, now therefore be resolved, that Anita L. Manoli being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2021. The proper motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Forish. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. Beazey. Questions?
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2016-9. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
And under the Park and Rec Commission, Mr. Tom Long is the incumbent, and he is interested in continuing to serve, so I appoint him, Mr. Tom Long.
The resolution reads, appointing member to the Latrobe GLSD Parks and Recreation Commission, now therefore be resolved, that Thomas B. Long being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe, Greater Latrobe School District Parks and Recreation Commission, resolve and counsel this state, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Murka, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bertels, Mr. Murka, and then Mr. Bertels. Any questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-10. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Bertels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Now comes the appeal to the public. We have several boards or authorities, a couple of authorities or boards that we need people for. The one that jumps out at me, quite frankly, is the Planning Commission. We currently have a vacancy because one of the members moved out of state. We are having difficulty having a quorum for those meetings, and those are critical, and we have people that are doing some, you know, remodeling, or, not remodeling, but more construction, I guess, and different things. So we really need someone from the community who's interested in serving on the Planning Commission. I believe they meet monthly if there's something on the agenda for them to discuss. Jim, are you on that? No.
I'm on the zoning hearing.
Oh, you're zoning hearing board. We also need a zoning board, a zoning hearing board alternate. We need it, we need someone on the Civil Service Commission. We are going to have a couple vacancies. It looks like we're going to have two vacancies, two additional vacancies on the IDA, the Industrial Development Authority, correct? Barb, is that how I read that?
I'm sorry. I was asking, Jim, um...
IDA. We really have two vacancies. Mr. Dominic is serving until he can be replaced, and there's two vacancies on the Industrial Development Authority, and I don't, and I don't know how often they meet, but I don't believe it's terribly often. It's only when there's an issue that they need to address, so maybe a couple times a year. I'm going to hold off on the Parking Authority because we're going to look at parking as a whole thing.
Is Carl on the Parking Board? Can he be on Parking and now he's on ALA?
I don't see why he could be.
He can't receive, he can't receive the stipend.
Yeah.
But he's on board. That he can still serve on both. Do you still want him? Okay.
So, here's my appeal to the public. Please consider serving on one of these boards or commissions. You can just send your name, just a little note, your name, that you're interested in serving on one of these boards. The Planning Commission, Civil Service, Industrial Development, or Zoning Hearing Board is an alternate. None of these, I don't believe any of these are extremely time-consuming. Again, they have a meeting at the most, monthly, once a month, but in more, more likely than not, it's in the event that there's a situation that comes up where they need to meet. So that's my appeal for help. Any other unfinished business? Any new business on anybody's mind? Any new business on anybody's mind as we start off the new year? Okay, at this time, we have our citizens' request open forum. If anyone would like to speak about anything that's on their mind, we are here to listen. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three to five minutes. Thank you.
Jim Fulton, 225 Riverdale Avenue. It's just something that's been said here in the last few minutes here, quite interesting to me. You stated just a little while ago, you don't have that $400,000 from the DAX money from the school board yet, but you've already spent half of it. What is the urgency in spending so quickly? Couldn't wait till February, March before you give us the parking recreation?
We haven't spent it. We haven't spent it.
You just approved a motion to spend it.
We, we put a motion...
To get the market to create a reserve.
No, listen, the motion, go ahead.
The motion is to create a reserve. They're not going to be even needing that money for over a year, but we just created a reserve so that it's set up for it, that's all.
It just sounded like to me, you know, one thing, you don't have it, but you're already spending it.
We have not spent it.
That's good. Hang on to it.
Jane Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I'm speaking regarding the different openings on the different boards and that there. I would like to serve on a couple of different boards, but it's been told that I couldn't be on the Planning Commission and the Zoning Hearing Board at the same time. And I think that kind of, you know, with nobody volunteering, it really creates a problem, and if...
I'm not sure that's our fault, though. I mean, I don't think that's us saying you can't. I think that's legal.
That's the state code, and, yeah, that's state code.
State code?
That's a state code that you're not allowed to...
Yeah, the problem is the zoning board is a legal entity, and because of that, if you serve on another board, it creates problems. You, you, it is a legal entity, it needs to be separate, that's why you can't be on anything else.
What zone, what boards could a person on a zoning hearing board be on other than...
I'd have to look, Jim, but I kind of agree with what our city manager is saying. Zoning cuts across a broad swath, and, and you've got to be careful to keep it separate and independent from the other, being on other boards and authorities. In other words, if you are on the Planning Commission, you've been making recommendations to yourself, so that precludes you from being on the Planning Commission. Some of the others I'd have to look at specifically.
I would hope that we would look at them in the near future because we've been questioned about it several times. I know I have questions, and an answer hasn't been given after trying to look it up.
The thing is, if you were, if you were on the Planning Board, you could be on another board. The problem is being on the zoning board is a legal entity, and because it is a legal entity, it's, you've got to be separate from the other boards.
What other boards could we serve on there?
On the zoning board, nothing. I'm saying, if you, if you were, end up on the Planning Board, you could be on IDA, you could be on other boards. It's the fact that the zoning board is a legal entity and set up a little differently.
What about Civil Service, that question?
That, again, Jim, I'd have to look at that to see if there's a specific conflict there. I know, for example, you cannot be a Justice of the Peace or District Justice and hold virtually any of these offices. Some are, some are precluded by the Constitution, some are precluded by statute specifically.
Thank you.
If you have a specific, I mean, if you have a specific other one you'd like to be on, we get research, other than, I know you couldn't be on the Planning Commission.
I just, I just mentioned the Civil Service.
Civil Service? Can, can you guys look into that, Jim? That one might work. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nicole Kelly. I live at 340 West First Avenue, Latrobe. I was curious as a younger member of the community, I'm looking around and not seeing a lot of those faces here, and I don't know if that, I've never been to a meeting, I'm pure for my...
Welcome.
And I'm very intrigued by everything going on, and I'm wondering, how are you going to convey that need to a younger generation to maybe mix up who's filling these posts? Are you going to advertise in the paper? Is this only going to be worded about? I just say that because I think it helps to have ideas coming from both ends, experienced people, and also some younger people coming up, and I was just curious how you might get some more of the youth involved in that. I'm 36, I'm not that young, anyway.
We would love to have more young people involved, absolutely. We have our Latrobe TV over there on the web. We advertise in the newspaper. We have our own website, and all of this is out there. We have Facebook page. Two newspapers, excuse me. Our electronic sign.
Okay.
And Word of Mouth, but...
Any suggestions that we would...
We would, yes.
I, well, at the moment, I'm a little pressed, but I'd be happy to work.
We appreciate that. Anyone else?
Brandon Markowitz, 107 Mark Street, Latrobe, PA. Question is on the athletic field, I understand there's supposed to be a 45-day waiting period before the deal is finalized, and that is because the school district wants to check the quality of the ground, so it's suitable or do they get a bill? And the question is, when will that be finalized?
There's a time period where they're going to do some testing of the...
Due diligence, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's standard.
And 45 days till they get their title searched, that's, that's not an uncommon period of time in which to wait for closing. They have to do a title search, they're doing some, I believe it's Level 1 environmental testing, just to be certain, but 45 days is not unusual to wait to close. It takes a good two to three weeks just for the title work to be completed.
I think his question, do we have a date?
It's usually on or before, so it could be any time within the, roughly a 45-day time span.
The answer is we don't have a date.
Very specific date, yes, but no.
Do you know when the agreement was signed?
Just a few days ago.
Last Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the agreement of sale will sign on whatever Tuesday it was, the 5th of January. So it would, I think it's 45 days from that date, pretty much.
On or before, yeah.
On or before. Anything else? City managers' report?
Just one quick item. I look back, it was a very busy year last year, and we're starting this year off kind of the same thing. Last year, we ran the $6,000 on this and sold some contracts and things, get a lot of things done. This year so far, we've, with the help of the insurance broker, we're going to, we've redone our insurance, same coverage, but I'm talking about the police liability and the council's liability. We've changed those insurances, and we've been able to save $6,000.
Very good. Let's look at all the contracts we have.
We do look at them, we try.
I know, I know. Is that it?
That's it. Figure that cake's getting cold.
Okay. Well, then, moving on to the mayor's report. I'm going to step down here for that. Today, we would like to take this opportunity to honor someone that has been near and dear to our hearts for many, many, many years. It is bittersweet for us at Latrobe City Council that Mr. Kelly has decided to retire at the end of January of this year. So I have a proclamation I'd like to read to Mr. Kelly, and then I would like to invite all of you to stick around, have some cake and refreshments to celebrate his retirement. Whereas James E. Kelly Jr. has served the city of Latrobe, formerly the borough of Latrobe, since November 9, 1977. Mr. Kelly was assistant solicitor until Latrobe Borough Council appointed him to the solicitor's position by unanimous vote on April 10, 1995. Whereas Mr. Kelly has seen many changes during his tenure and watched quite a few mayors and council members pass through the council chambers during his years as solicitor. Whereas over these past decades, he has prepared countless ordinances and resolutions, drafted agreements, composed numerous proclamations, and provided legal advice to all city officials. Whereas in addition to the plethora of business-related items Jim has steadfastly completed for the city by giving his time, energy, enthusiasm, and professional expertise while carrying out his duties, he has also been a great friend to everyone willing to contribute to every cause. Now therefore, having great pride and affection for Jim as he retires on January 31, 2016, we express to him by this proclamation our deepest thanks, heartfelt appreciation, and gratitude for all his years as solicitor, and best wishes for health, happiness, and continued blessing. As William Shakespeare stated, "It is not in the stars to hold our destiny, but in ourselves." Jim shaped his own destiny, and as he enjoys his well-deserved retirement, we, we will miss him. In testament thereto, I've set my hand under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 11th day of January in the year 2016. Congratulations. And then if you'd step over here, we have a few little parting gifts for you.
Oh.
Speech! Speech!
That's the last thing you want.
He's a lawyer, we might be here until that.
Oh. Would you like to say a few words first?
Very easily. No, I just wanted to say that what Mayor Wolford said was correct has been over 30-some years, and I started coming to council meetings before this building was here. And if I recall correctly, and it's been a long time, they were above the Mozart House. That's, that's on the second floor. That's where, where I attended my first council meeting. But, you know, Mayor Wolford also said one other thing, she used the word friends. And I think the two things that I am most proud of is representing the city, that's number one, and being the president of our bar association back in the 1990s. But more importantly, what will stay with me for quite a long time, I've met so many great people who have worked here at the city. I mean, it is a team effort. It's been a team effort from one council to the next, from one city manager to the next, from all the employees, Joe and the chief, and the chief, I don't see him, where he is? Derek's over there, and Barbara, you know, Barbara was saving me many times, like making sure I didn't forget things. But, no, I'm just going to remember all the great friends and all the wonderful things that happened over the years, and hopefully I can feel I've been a little part of the number of things that have occurred. I'll miss everybody. I'll, I'll be back, I'll be doing something. But thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barb, do you want to come over here and help with this?
Here's your brick.
My brick.
And it is number 95 for the year. This is a certificate of authenticity of this brick for the Standard Steel plant.
Thank you.
That's one thing there. He likes what Latrobe Alimentation is out there. Okay. Well, now, now that's going down.
Oh. I would say, there, I don't look like there, but in a public meeting, so... This is a handful of mementos from the city throughout the years. You'll see all kinds of neat little things in there. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Wow. That's neat.
Yeah, it's probably solar.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's why we left it in the box.
There you go. When you tow this off, that'll stick. That'll stick to it, so you don't want to tow it off.
So you take it out.
I don't see something true. And then it's solar powered.
Yeah, you have to show us.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You can come over here and just watch us them fall off.
I have to be real careful with this thing. It's one of, it's a solar-powered globe, and, and it just rests slightly above the pedestal, and it will turn just because of the light, the lights will do it.
And then read it.
Oh, and it says, "Solicitor James E. Kelly Jr. for 38 years of service, City of Latrobe, January 31, 2016. Thank you all very much."
Before I adjourn the meeting, I just once again want to thank Mr. Kelly. We have one more meeting, we have an agenda prep meeting on January 25. Mr. Kelly will be, be here with us, but we wanted to take this opportunity at our regular meeting to thank him and honor him, and it's just been incredible. The, the knowledge and experience that Jim has is, will, will be greatly missed, and I'm glad you're still going to be in town.
Could I have one of the down-low people know?
Please.
But in the past 75 years, Latrobe has had three solicitors, John Lightcap and Gina Donald, myself. Gina is the longest tenured, and I do owe Gina debt of gratitude. He was my mentor for many years. He was almost 40 years as a solicitor.
Wow.
And I was 20 years, and John was, I think, around 15 years, so 75 years have been three of us sitting at that table.
You've got some big shoes to fill there, Zach. Well, thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn, and then we can have some cake?
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second, please?
A second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.